Today we're going to meet in the regular council of City of Elswood for Monday, October the 23rd. Say pledge allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with no bounds. My first item on our agenda tonight would be the consent agenda, the approval of the October 9th special meeting and the regular meeting minutes. And also the water and sewer termination request, are there any of those?
Good one.
Good one. Mr. Mayor, I make an objection to approve the consent agenda consisting of the approval of the 10-9 special meeting and regular meeting minutes and the one order termination request. Council of Springfield has made a motion to approve the consent agenda, Council of Renard has seconded that motion, any debate, any concerns, anything that we missed? All right, hearing that all the papers say aye?
Aye.
There it is online. Yeah, sort of speaker. Let's go through the voting vote. Anybody who votes? All right, motion carries, we'll go ahead and approve that consent agenda, so next item on our agenda would be petitions and delegations. For all comments, please state your full name and whether you're a Elswood city resident. All citizen comments will limit to five minutes per subject unless the city council has further questions. Would anyone like to approach the city council for comments tonight? All right, no comments, we'll move on to the unfinished business section. This has to do with the TIP funds usage request by Kurt Blaser and the legal review of the request. So it's fairly extensive, I'll read it and try to read it slowly, but for whatever reason, I've got the HTML document here, it's not open access, we try to get it. Here it is straight here, all right, background information, Roman numeral number one, introduction, this agenda item pertains to a recent request to utilize tax increment financing. TIP funds collateral construction financing for Oak Creek Chiropractic LLC specifically involved in First Bank Kansas represented by Kurt Blaser. The request was brought before city council in consideration, but after conducting a legal review of city attorney Melissa Miller and consultation with our bond counsel Kevin Cowan, it has been determined this request is not in the best interest of the city. This background report aims to summarize the key points related to the request and a legal review process. Roman numeral two, TIP funds and permitted uses. TIP funds are an essential financial tool for fostering redevelopment and revitalization within our community. The Kansas statutes govern TIP districts, provide broad guidance on the types of cost that may be paid from TIP funds. Permitted costs include, but not limited to, one, acquisition of property within the redevelopment project area, two, land acquisition, three, site preparation and carrying utility relocations, four, public utilities, five, street grading, maybe other related infrastructure improvements, six, parking facilities, seven, public amenities such as landscaping, lighting and art installations, eight, costs related to redevelopment finance and the redevelopment project, three, prohibited uses. Statutes also specify certain prohibited uses, one of which is particular relevance to the current request. Costs incurred in connection with the construction of buildings or other structures to be owned by or leased to a developer expressly excluded from eligible expenses under the TIP district framework. The analysis, Roman numeral four, the key issue at hand centers on the proposed use of TIP funds as collateral for a loan to finance a construction of building. While there are no direct limitations on the usage of TIP funds as collateral, it is essential to establish a justifiable connection between the use of these funds and one of the approved expenditure categories listed above. Usage of collateral does not constitute one of the explicitly accepted uses under the TIP statutes. Although one could argue that collateralization indirectly facilitates financing for approved expenses, this argument may not be acceptable, especially if any portion of the loan funds secured by the TIP funds is intended to fund the construction of a building or a structure not owned by the city. Based on the information provided, it is reasonable to assume that this could be the case in the sentence. Conclusion, after careful consideration, almost done folks. And legal review, it's our opinion that utilizing TIP funds as collateral for construction financing does not align with the permitted uses outlined in the Kansas TIP statutes. To ensure that we adhere to the law and act in the best interest of our community, we recommend against proceeding with the requests presented. If you have any further questions or concern, please not hesitate to contact us for clarification. Melissa's going to be on the line. The budget impact is $120,000, she needs escrow approved. Recommendation is a recommendation of administration that Oak Creek Chiropractic and First Bank stated the original approval by city council. We are still waiting on the plans requested by city council and we will not release the funds to Oak Creek Chiropractic until the plans are received. Go ahead, Dustin, sorry.
Oh, you're fine.
Yep.
I did invite Kurt Blaser to come talk to council in case I got some of my facts wrong. And Melissa's on the line and we, I did talk to her earlier today. And I did send in an email, she did send us original plans, now we just need the cost breakdown of the city easement, so we ask.
Okay, I sent her an email specifying that this afternoon.
Okay, cool. Yes, yeah, go ahead. First of all, I apologize, maybe I shouldn't have come to the very first meeting because collateral is not for, it tends to be collateral. So I'm going to explain a little bit and then maybe a little bit of the pipeline, too much email, but Lindsay said I had to divulge some of it. So what's really happening is we are applying with the funding for an SBA permanent loan. So it has to do with the permanent financing of the project, not construction of the project, which is through an SBA loan. And we're doing primarily the longer term fixed financing, which is favorable to her. So as part of that project, SBA has requirements that they have so much of their own capital or equity into the project. And she was short a little bit on that, so question came up, can we use the funds that has been allocated in the city account towards that project? The answer to that, what I got was yes, but I either needed, A, those funds to be dispersed before we make application, because our application is just in old status waiting to go, or two, we have to hold it in an escrow account to show that the city has dispersed it under these conditions. But it's not as collateral, it's not, it's not used in collateral in any form, it's just basically, I need to show that the money is being dispersed to her under these conditions and that it is, I can't wait till the end of the project, it needs to come at an earlier date. So my question originally was, I don't know what the conditions were to get the plans, but it was like, okay, when is the funds going to come? At the very end of the project construction or can it come sooner? If we can have it come sooner, then I can go ahead and make the application for her to the SBA. So with Dustin, I had a conversation today, there seems to be a little bit of misconstrued over how many little items are in there, but that is not, I'm sorry. Just basically, is there a way we could go ahead and just, it's now been six weeks since I really kind of asked, but is there a way we could go ahead and distribute the funds to be used for what she's using? So I can count it as that, is basically what the answer is. And I think today, we gave the plans and those were received by that, so. I didn't have to deal, I fully get the TIP district, we actually, we actually bought all the TIP funds, I perfectly understand how it works. While I got the floor, I will give you more input, I never came to meeting, but I do not think TIP funds should be used to tear down people's hospitals, so. Did I make sense of that?
You did, thank you for coming, getting them to clarify.
And I think part of it is, you know, the $120,000 is a maximum that we'll distribute if we receive receipts for work done inside of our right of way. Part of, part of the original allocation was we would get a cost breakdown of work to show that $120,000 was the appropriate number. When I received that, and looking at the plans, I couldn't really tell where the right of way was exactly, but I'm having a hard time believing that she's going to be able to spend $120,000 in our right of way. What I see on the plans, I think the stuff in the alley would be eligible. And then the stuff, you know, her curb cuts and a little bit of drive, it's in our right of way and any landscaping, but it says the landscaping is going to be done by others later, so I don't know what she's going to come up with for $120,000 there. So I'm afraid that if we allocate $120,000, the receipts aren't going to show, she's going to give a bunch of that money back, is what I'm afraid of.
So where do we go from here with this process?
Go stick to your original request, I did shoot her an email this afternoon that you were included in Kurt asking for the cost breakdown of all costs occurred and incurred in our right of way.
So it's an open ended?
Yep, as soon as I get those, you've already given me approval.
Approval for release the money?
And if I have, based on the amount that's in the cost breakdown, it's eligible. And I'll run it by Melissa.
And receipts, I mean, the other receipt, we're completed.
Yep.
Everybody's okay with that?
Only part I'm not okay with that is the receipt portion of it, because that's what I was asking for originally, it was like, if we, the way through the receipts is going to be at the end of the project, not upfront. That's why I originally asked that even if the fund can be shown being held in escrow, that we didn't disperse them until the end and then we got receipts, but we were holding the funds in escrow for the amount of the cost breakdowns, then I can count it towards that.
So Melissa, did you with it, weigh into that or?
Okay, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Yes, no, maybe?
Melissa?
Hello, can you hear me? I'm trying. Hello?
Yeah. Melissa?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, good, hi.
Hey Melissa, did you hear Kurt's, the last of this?
Yeah, so a part of that, I guess, and I'll, I'll have to apologize because by the time the question made it to me, I guess I misunderstood the question. So I, I did not appropriately ask that question to Kevin Cowan. The, the, it, what Mr. Glazer is saying makes a lot of sense and I, I don't know that there's going to be any necessarily restrictions on that, given, basically you would say you would disburse the funds to be held in escrow and they would only be paid out to equal the receipts and then if there was any money that would come back. Now, I'm not telling you 100% you can do that, the best I can offer is I can call Kevin tomorrow and confirm whether or not we can do that. But you guys can approve it conditional upon us confirming with Kevin that it's okay to, to take that step, does that make sense?
Yes. Makes sense to you?
Yeah.
So as long as she understands that that money may come back. Or you want receipts, you want an invoice, or what, what kind of documentation we're talking about?
That's your call.
I think it has to be an invoice. I think it's way with the.
It's reimbursement for, I believe, for work that they've already done is the standard form of the TIP. So you provide us whatever proof of the work that you did that falls under those TIP usages, I mean, you had that whole list there that you read. And we reimburse up to the amount that you guys have committed towards, so you've already committed that amount. Just the question is, can they hold it and then pay out of it so that they can show that they have it, which makes sense. I just don't know 100% if you can do that without checking with Kevin.
It's going to work. Without one, Dustin's your job. Because you got receipts, you got, the money may have to be paid back.
Well, so the receipts are standard procedure. Basically, what you're going to approve is the dispersment of the full amount to an escrow fund to be paid out later, once the receipts come in, per normal TIP standards. Contingent upon Kevin Cowan, Kevin Cowan saying we can legally do that.
Okay, so to disburse a full amount of $120,000 into an escrow fund at First Bank Kansas contingent upon Kevin Cowan's approval, is that common?
Yeah, that'll be fine. And then the escrow account will have those limitations that we talked about, which is basically regular TIP requirements.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to do that, to approve the dispersment of the $120,000 promised to Oak Creek Chiropractic to an escrow account at First Bank Kansas.
Contingent upon?
Contingent upon the approval by Kevin Cowan, our bond counsel, and that the dispersment from that account follow regular TIP procedures.
All right, Council of Springfield has made a motion to disburse $120,000 sent to the First Bank Kansas account, serves in escrow. Contingent upon Mr., what's his last name?
Cowan.
Mr. Cowan's approval. And what else? Disbursement to follow, based on receipts, invoices, so on and so forth.
With the understanding that if she doesn't have that whole receipts, invoices with $120,000, whatever is, what happens coming back to the city?
With the understanding that the remaining balance that is unused will return to the city. Back to TIP.
I would second that.
All right, Council of Springfield, everybody's welcome, Council of Renard has seconded that motion, hearing. Any debate, any concerns, missing information?
Now I appreciate the opportunity to clear things up, thank you.
All right, hearing that all is, papers say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries, all right, very good. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda would be the turbine blower purchase, that is the agenda item report 23-30, looks like six. Hello, good question, hey, question. Well, everyone, pretty simple, much more simple than last thing you just did. All the funding for this would be this year's operating budget, annual budget, you have three bids there in front of you. We're going to choose the, I've heard the Buffalo, they're going to deliver away earlier than the other two. And a lot of my colleagues are using that exact model, they love it, it's one of their favorite tools on their belt. So this would be anything for us, you know, obviously labor is getting harder and harder to find, so a tow behind blower will save us a lot of time blowing areas as opposed to hand blowing. But like I said in my, in my page there, I mean, this thing has a lot of uses citywide, I mean, that any department could tow it and remove sticks and leaves from areas that they don't want sticks, weeds, grass.
That's the weeds field.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Sure.
Absolutely. I want to commend that trivia because a lot of this is due to him watching his costs and keeping them low and managing his budget.
It's just the $10,000, right?
Yeah, the $10,070, yeah, the, the Vanwall has two different models on there.
Mayor, I would make, I propose to accept the bid for Vanwall equipment for the purchase of a Buffalo turbine blower at the cost not to exceed $10,075.
I made a motion to accept the bid from Vanwall Equipment for the purchase of a Buffalo turbine blower at the cost of $10,075. Wayne is second to that motion, any debate, any concerns on that? All right, hearing that all, papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all very much. All right. Okay, this is a resolution number 2023-09 establishing city equipment rates for property mitigation. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, I am proposing a resolution 2023-09 establishing equipment rates for various pieces of equipment that I, and to sum it up, I would like to use city staff to help with property mitigation. I don't know if I'm in agreement, some of my colleagues, like my colleague in Joaquinie does it for free. I'm not all, I don't know if I'm on board with that. On, but one of my intentions behind this resolution is to just establish some standard rates. We, we were trying to hit that sweet spot of, we don't want to become the new, we don't want to compete with area people for, I don't want to take business away from like Kevin, a lot of our people, we want to be a deterrent. So these prices are based on a lot of the back and forth, which means myself, Troy, checking prices in the area and things of that nature. So that when spring does come around, it gives us an additional option, because I don't have a lot of budgeted time to use the private contractor for a lot of property mitigation. And this will allow me an additional tool to use city staff to mitigate some of our more problem properties and have an approved price list, predictable prices, so that we can bill the property owner if once prosecution, we go through the nuisance abatement.
Prosecution, how is that different from what we were doing six months ago?
What's different is that we can use city staff as opposed to using a city contractor.
And that was expensive to work with.
Yeah, whereas this one, we already have budgeted their time, we already have budgeted the maintenance of equipment, this is just reimbursed for some of the costs we're using on staff, as well as maybe using those in between.
So what was happening is we're billing people, we weren't getting anything back, we're wasting money.
That's correct, well, well, still, we may still have the same option, but at least we're you, we're paying, we're already paying for city staff. Some highlights based on my negotiations with staff, they were the least like a $211 room for committing to a job. So that would be what we would put on the tax, on what we need if the customer didn't pay that incentive, it pays back. But it would also give us a quicker turnaround type too, depending on our schedule and.
I mean, you could do this. Well, I have some, but on. First of all, I mean, we've budgeted for our city staff time to do work that we already need them to do, that they're having a hard time getting accomplished. So I really, I really keep adding more things that we expect them to get done. We just went through the weed thing, trying to eliminate some work for them. Really didn't seem to think they had time to do it, so I'm really nervous about it. I know it's gotten more expensive for us to do property mitigation, I think partly because we're trying to do it the right way and actually have a contract written. And I, I think that our costs really went up due to that, but it is the right way we should be doing it. You know, I don't think, you know, just from my experience with county work, we wouldn't be allowed into the, the county, there's actually a statute that and can't build private property and do work. And charge for that work. But I'd be interested to make sure that there was something in our city. For that, I mean, this is kind of a gray area because it's not, they're not hiring us to do it, but they're almost hiring us to do it by not doing it themselves. So, a little, I'm comfortable with that. I'd like to know, somebody could do some research and just make, verify that, that we can actually do this. And I'm guessing that because of the way it's set up, that we can, just because it is, it's not really a penalty, but it is. I have a penalty. The other thing, we need to make sure that our rates are based on something legal, because we can't, we can't use it as a penalty. Just make our rates so high that, you know, it's a penalty.
Well, the back, to me, the back, she, $100 bucks an hour.
Yeah, I think it is.
You can't get it back for $100 bucks.
Yeah, I think it, I think it's.
And I think if we're, if we're not, then we have to change when we start penalizing people or when we start mitigating properties, because we wait until it costs a thousand dollars, we let the grass get waist high and then we go in there and then it's a thousand dollars because it takes him, and he did a great job, but it's a thousand dollars, so we either have to let this, figure this out and make this work, or we have to start changing when we start making people, or when we start going in and mitigating properties, so it's not a thousand dollars at a shot, you know?
And I think we lowered the grass height down to six inches from nine, try and, you know, for that reason, to try and get on it earlier.
I mean, I think the thing is, we mitigate these new properties every year. Every year, it's the same people that were mitigating properties on, so we just need to know when it comes to spring, these are the properties that we're going to be taking care of. Florida, it's the same people every year, they don't care, they don't care, they don't, they don't care, they're never going to pay it and they know that, and we're going to take care of it, so I think we just need to know these are the properties that we're going to be taking care of all summer long, and get on top of it before Kip has to go in and it's a thousand dollars to mitigate a property.
But we already have that list.
I mean, if prices are not a penalty, you know, I think that'd be all right. If it's legal to do, I guess, I don't know. I mean, if it is, at least it gives us that much.
Yeah, and I, yeah, and I don't want the city staff to feel like they're overworked having to do this, at the same time, I agree with Wayne, but something has to give, because they're just getting more people that don't, they're not taking care of their properties.
This isn't necessarily a reveal at all, this is just adding options that I can use, it's not that I'm going to be solely reliant on city staff for property mitigation, I just know that it is a task that needs to be done if we're going to continue to improve.
What do they think about it?
This was built with Troy and Dalvin and Steve. This is built kind of with all of us contributing to it. So I would not have done something like this without visiting with them and getting their input first.
Kevin, are you going to help out with the time zones or?
If you want, I will work with Melissa to further this and I can bring it back to you.
I would also, if you're going to do, if we're going to do that, there may need to, you guys can think of a way to put it here, that these prices are paid regularly, so we don't.
Well, it would be an annual update, that's kind of what, I can do that. Okay.
That's fair. All right, so we're just going to. All right, next item on our agenda, unless anybody's got anything else to say. The billboard signing, I think Stacy's going to do a little explanation for us, or do you want us to vote on it, or is it pretty self editorial?
I'm not even going to draw.
You didn't notice I just wrote your packet and then it just like distorted. So if I were you, I wouldn't approve any of those.
And that one's not distorted.
No.
I'll go with. Sorry, it started to 11 by 8 portrait, that was the, the software did that.
All right, let's do the last. Aaron, what do you think? Aaron, you like a four one?
All their spots, images, your cable and all of that. Because these are, these are going to be up for a while until we redesign again.
And this is the wicked, wickedest town, those buildings? Three of them?
Yes.
Fourteen, there's more than.
Third.
Right?
And then the one that's downright now that was broken, which usually is the crazy part.
And we are going to help.
Yeah, with the guy in the corner.
But if everyone's good before, that's all. Thank you.
It was easy, thank you. So here we are, Tiff Resolution twenty twenty-three dash ten. I want to read another one for a couple of years, so. But I felt like it, it's time to understand that completely, so that was good. Um, go ahead, explain this to us, please.
So, um, one of the items that I remember about when I asked during my interview, I asked what project she wanted me to work on. The two you mentioned are Chrisick Park and the hospital. Uh, I, my first attempt at trying to mitigate the hospital, I went. North Regional Central Planning Commission had a meeting with Brownfield and they pretty much, all of their team of experts said I can't. I can use the Brownfield to pay for the mitigation of it. But I have, they will not be my demolition service, is what I told them. Uh, within three, a year and a half, I've been here, I've had three people approach the city. And tell me that they have money or that they have plans to. Uh, fix up the hospital and while some of them have been more promising than others, uh, none of them have cash. And it just seems to hold on contingencies. And I'm not here to make a policy decision, that's your arena. I'm just trying to show you that, you know, I'm serious about responding to what you tasked me with doing. And the only feasible option I have. Is I don't know what grant, what grants I have available for this type of project. That's at a brown field. And I don't know of a lot of investors who have millions of dollars to invest in fixing it up. Because there are structural issues based on stuff I've read up to this point. And so the only feasible option that I have come up with is to do add it to the Tiff District. And, um, we do have at least construction funds. This is in lieu of Melissa. Melissa helped me. Come up with this option, and Melissa, you can chime in anytime. On, you know, to, uh, I asked her to draft a, a, a resolution in lieu with her experts. You know, to add it to the Tiff District so that whether Stacy comes up with a solution or you come up with a solution, we have access to capital. You know, to do something with it. And so the first step in the process is to do this resolution instead of a public hearing. To launch that discussion, which the, the closest we can have a public hearing is on the November twenty-seventh. Um, twenty twenty-three, because it has to be more than thirty days for when you approve the resolution. And so we chose five o'clock on November twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three to have that public hearing. On to, uh, consider, this resolution does not commit you. To anything other than having a public hearing to visit. Uh, and then discuss the possibility of adding the hospital to the Tiff District. So that is what I brought to you, to show you that I'm serious about answering your call. To mitigating the hospital. I'll go back to the drawing board if this is not what you want to do, but this. Is the, the most feasible option when we have access to capital to start confronting this, like this property. And Melissa, if you have anything to add or if I missed anything.
I don't think so. I think you did a pretty good job of covering it. Essentially, the passage of the resolution is establishing the public hearing to get public feedback on whether you should or should not. Add the hospital to the Tiff District. There are some notifications that will take place. Those are in the resolution. Um, Callie and I will touch base on those and make sure we get those right after you pass the resolution, if that's what you choose to do. And yeah, basically, it's just the first step in. A decently lengthy process, but.
What's the second step? We have a public hearing. What comes down now, Melissa?
Would have put me on the spot. Um. I believe that it requires an ordinance to add the hospital to the Tiff. District, which basically just means. Expand the Tiff District. Again, you're not committing Tiff funds by doing that. You're just making the use of Tiff funds. An option. Um, but I, I think that you would. Have an, you would pass an ordinance adding the hospital to the Tiff District if you so choose after hearing the public feedback and. Whatever else from the hearing.
And adding it to the Tiff District, you don't have to go with my protocol to mitigate it. Tear it down. Um, she, it also allows Stacy to, uh, maybe she can formulate. And correct it amongst Stacy and Dennis, but it also gives her some additional tools and tool bag to maybe.
Whatever happened to that company that was interesting? The Manhattan, they from Manhattan or?
So they came back and did a second study on it. So they've invested again. Uh, it's not looking like it's going to cash flow. So I think they went and did it, but they, they were really serious about it. Okay, it's not going to make sense.
Yeah, now I was curious.
Yeah, thank you for asking.
So if we pass the ordinance then, what, we're, we're, we can, we can commence. Funding a project at that point, Melissa, or?
Yeah, I will, um. I mean, and there may be more steps that I, this is my first time dealing with the Tiff, so don't hold me to this, but. I, you know, essentially, the hu- hospital, the property is in the Tiff District and then the Tiff funds would be available. Um, there's also, I guess that's something that I should point out to you as recommended by Kevin. Um, he believes that our plan is broad enough to cover what Dustin is proposing, which is basically the demolition, but. He did, there's a section, sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but there is a section where we're talking about making an amendment to the Tiff Plan itself. Um, which Kevin recommended that we stick in the piece of basically like raise removal and, uh. Environmental remediation as things that the Tiff Funds could be utilized for, for this project. Again, you're not required to do that just by passing this resolution, but you are. Teeing yourself up for that option if you choose it. But yeah, I think. You add the hospital to the Tiff District and then it's available to utilize Tiff Funds with council approval for. Whatever, whatever that looks like. I mean, obviously you need a plan and. You know, the logistical side of it, but that's not. The Tiff side of it, that's just the administrative side, I guess.
And I think when we do this, you have to understand, for some people, it's an emotional issue. This, they may not understand that this is a tip, especially meaning for Tiff, I mean, it could be, we got to be ready for. Maybe some structural analysis that you have that Dustin could have. We have some bullet point phrases to tell them what condition the hospital will be, because I get calls. All over the state, not a lot, but a few, hey, you know, you need to really do something with a hospital. They don't understand the amount of deterioration that's happened in the last hundred fifteen years. They saw it ten years ago. They don't realize, so. Having those bullet points, if that does come up, that we can be prepared to say, I know the, the spine of it is corroded really. You know, if, if you're looking at a metal skeleton of a hospital, that's the big thing that has steered a lot of developers away. Because it's hard to rebuild something like that. So things like that, both of you could have, that we're ready. Because they may not come here for Tiff, but they may come here thinking this is an attempt to, you know, go murder, so just kind of head to it.
I think the goal is to have that property developed at this point. Well, yeah, this is our tool that we use to encourage development. I don't. Personally not pay for using it to tear it down or remediate it, but, um. But maybe no one, anyone have to do that, but still. I don't, this, like you said, this doesn't. This doesn't lock us into doing anything. So they have to come go through applications and for the funds to be expeditious.
This is Mayor, I'm moving the approved resolution number twenty twenty-three dash ten and in the hospital. The old hospital. I will second that. Counselor Scrutfield has been motioned to approve the, uh, Tiff Resolution twenty twenty-three dash ten. To move the old hospital into the Tiff District. Counselor Renard has seconded that. Um, any discussion or concerns?
This resolution doesn't add it to the Tiff District. Mr. Mayor just simply sets the public hearing to have the, to facilitate the discussion. Of the possibility of adding it to the Tiff.
As we work, so Counselor Scrutfield has made a motion to approve the resolution to. Uh, have a public hearing to potentially add the old hospital to the Tiff District. And that is Tiff Resolution twenty twenty-three dash ten. Counselor Renard has seconded that motion. Any concerns? All right, hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Next item on the agenda would be the approval of the snow removal equipment building at the Ellsworth Airport.
Yeah, so, um, every year FAA gives us seven hundred fifty thousand dollars to, uh, apply for our grants. And we gave up our twenty twenty-three funds. Um, to slow down. I just kind of wanted to slow down, get the runway project finished. Which is, which it isn't. We're still hammering out some meetings there. Um, but we're getting gearing up for twenty twenty-four. And, um, something the airport board has requested is. A facility to store, uh, they did purchase as part of a, a previous purchase, uh. Snow removal equipment, which includes a tractor and accessories, and they would like to build a maintenance shed. For, uh, the accessories. Uh, the total engineering for, uh, the project, which I've been told by Brad Waller will be reimbursed. Once we submit our application, but he wanted to get started on the surveying and stuff now, so we'd be making monthly payments up. Um, apply for the grants and get our yearly funding and, um. So this is just him, uh, requesting approval, uh, for those funds.
Wasn't there something we had to contribute to?
Well, uh, we're going to have to make monthly payments for, uh, the engineering up until we get. Uh, up until we get approved for the funds that Callie can do after all.
We have the budget for that.
We will, we can find it.
What you're saying, this is worth pursuing. And you're being.
Oh, yes.
And what you, what we talked about in the conversation is if we don't keep getting grants because we didn't get it last year, it may be that we never get them again.
Um, that's not true. It's just we'll lose, we'll lose out on a twenty twenty-four distribution of that. So it's basically giving up free money. The FAA keeps on providing. Um, is, is it mission central? No, but it is, uh. We, uh, it is a use it or lose it each year.
And we haven't identified use for it.
Yes.
Because they have been using snow removal.
Currently in city facilities.
And that's what happens. They're, they're supposed to go out there first. Do that and then come back. And that's the agreement.
That's correct.
So will this equipment go out there?
Yes, here.
Okay.
Because it's originally the airport's.
Right, okay. Well, that makes it more sense. Mr. Mayor, I'm moving that we award the contract to Brad Waller, uh, finish. To conduct the engineering for the snow removal equipment building in the upper area.
Second.
Counselor Scrutfield has made a motion to approve, um. Uh, Brad would finish to, uh, do the engineering for the snow removal equipment building. Um, Counselor Tushka Hansen has seconded that motion. Uh, any debate, concerns? All right. Don't hear anything. Hearing now, all in favor say aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries. We're going to move forward with that. All right, department heads, um, we just got reports. Does anybody want to approach counsel with comments? Come on up.
I just got one item, um, talked to Steph a little bit about it. Took some guns away, um, uh, some events going on where I charge or not charge a fee. That comes from, uh, facilities, retention chair rentals. I know in the past, you know, like, for example, City State Bank, First Bank, you know, they have their hot dog days. Pumpkin party, I just always just dominated the tables, especially events like that. Um, truck or tree, um, you know, cow town days. And then, like, every year, like, the, the Veterans Mill, we have here one year. Want some input and that's okay to do that now. Every year or somebody to get permission. How he weighed, so just want to get your, your guys to stop on that.
Every year, these six events would be waiting.
Right, I mean, that's just, I mean, tables and chairs, and maybe getting six to eight tables.
Right.
And then, yeah, bring them back.
Right.
And so, just.
See the problem with that?
In my opinion, all these fees are going to one here, uh, I think you're.
What is the fee per?
Yeah, it's one by seven.
I bought a quarter of the ground over today, so.
Another miss too, it's small fest.
Yeah.
You know, the credit union, I did build them. Um, but I don't know, that was a community thing. They haven't paid it yet, so I can always go over there and tell them.
Would you, would you hear directions? Yeah, it sounds like everybody's on board with waiving these fees, but your discretion. Um, you're okay with that or?
Uh, that's your call. So if you want, if you're willing to, like, a grant, Ron and I, uh, administrative discretion, I think we will get it here to whatever you want.
Yeah.
You're okay with that too, Aaron? Okay. All right, so good, thank you. All right, Chief, do you have anything?
I don't feel enough to come all the way up there. We set up our truck retreat on Halloween. Out front for the funders and, uh, veterans. So James will probably be there as well, so you probably. For this. No, we're not. I know last year they, they did one. I don't know, are they doing that again? They did the food drive and the blood drive stuff last year, right? Or no, food, is that your mom in the door?
Yeah, I don't know.
They've tried it at FFA, does, or does trick or pan or whatever? So you can either leave food on your porch when they go by, or you can get a hold of school and you can deliver it there. To FFA and they'll, they'll link it up.
I think that's something, though, that we could probably partnership with in the future. Maybe put that on there to add to it on our end. That means never. Never ask too much food for people to need it, right? I mean, so I'm going to go ahead and work that down in, in the, in the future. It's something that we can. We can work together with the food bank and maybe put that out there and provide a place that it drops. So I'm going to make note of that for the future.
Well, we've come to the conclusion and we've got comments. Patrick, did you need that announcement? Okay, no, sir. All right. Um, anybody else? Okay, all right, one, one's twice. Uh, so we'll city turn it first. Melissa, do you have any comments?
I do not.
All right, Cal, do you have any? All right, Dustin, take it away.
Um, you've got most of my, and so, but I do want to ask city council, uh. One, I've talked to both, uh, you and I've talked about, uh, Dan and, um. Wayne regarding this, but I wanted to request bigger council requesting a retreat. Bigger council requesting a retreat, a one-day retreat in January, once the election's done and we know who our all-star cast is moving forward. Um, I am requesting a, uh, one-day retreat. Um, and a couple of things I would hope to accomplish with that. One, I'm gonna ask Melissa to come and give a class. Show you some videos from the League of Municipalities, Kansas Municipalities, and Wayne was sharing, so. I'm just, uh, the role of council, most of you know that already, but for anybody new or any. I also want to include a tour of city facilities. I know I tried to do that individually. That kinda drove, by the way, aside for a while, but. Um, it would just mean, and just have each staff member to give you a tour of their facilities and. Give a little bit of what they do. I know I've done that with you individually, but just, uh, council day retreat, just to show you what we do on a daily basis and. Kind of, uh, show you the rules, show you the legality of it, but. Uh, I wanted to ask if that was something that you would be willing to come to, if I could have. Facilitated it.
That's just. Well, it's something well, I mean, even if it's not January, it's March, I mean. You know, it's fine. Just let us know well in advance. We can find more. Is there any dates I should avoid? Yeah, I think we're. Okay.
One thing, one thing I would like. Um. More training on is reading a financial statement.
Sure.
Cause I like to think I know what I'm looking at, but I'm pretty sure I don't. It's not my, it's not my thing.
Okay. We can facilitate that. I'll make that a part of the retreat.
Will you have like athletic events at the end of it, or what's gonna?
Well, it's water.
Nobody can do, get a saddle, let there be some. Equine out there and go to there. Been a while, but I, I do enjoy this a lot of fun. So that's something a good idea. So, yeah, I think if we don't get everybody, you get four, that's more than you had last time.
I would prefer to ask everyone.
Sure. Yeah. All right.
It's my request.
Anything else to ask there?
No, that's my main request. Uh, you, everything else is included in your email.
Okay, all right. Uh, Aaron, do you have anything?
Kyle.
All right, Kyle, do you have anything?
The only thing I have, I was talking to Troy the other day. He was. Wondering about on that walking path of boxes they put in, is there, is there something in there for like a handrail or something, so you don't fall off the side?
No.
Cause he didn't think it then there or something.
Yeah.
Do you have any? What's going on with the upside of those boxes for the?
Yeah, I don't remember the exact spacing, but the path is far enough from into the box. I mean, that was a discussion specifically with KOD. Uh, there's, say, six feet under like that number. Uh, clear zone between the edge of the path and into the box, that KOD did not require a railing rail. Doesn't mean somebody could put one up and sit here, you know, develop against me later, but.
Well. That, uh, uh, Troy's really concerned about it and, um, I'm a little weary listening to his concerns. I may, uh, I may approach you this week. I already told Troy I would, but I'm gonna work with Wayne and you to possibly add him because it's something he feels that he's had.
I think they do, but I can't speak for KOD. Theoretically, it could be installed, it could be installed with contract. I don't care, it would allow it to be changed over again, but. You could drill holes in the top of the box and, um, epoxy bolts in there and then drop the railing right on top of it. Makes it like what they did on the, on the caution sidewalks.
All right, well, I'll, I'll talk to you about that this week, cause I think we're gonna, Troy's really feels strongly about it.
Which is a pretty, pretty good draw.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't need to argue, but I've worked with John and she would.
Okay, well, that's your preference.
All right, anything else? Wayne, did you have anything?
No.
Sure, okay. Garcia, do you have anything?
Uh, no, just thanks for the understanding the last couple of weeks, you're the main.
Yeah, we, we definitely centered condolences and your dad was a super guy. I mean, what an amazing human being. Um, you know, it's difficult for sure, and many of us have experienced that and it's tough, so we appreciate. There are three of us, I'm not gonna lie, that have had quite a year here and we're still here and that says a lot about the three of us and I'll include myself with that. I mean, it's not over yet, but, um, you just gotta keep working at it and caring for each other and, you know, pushing forward and. You know, I, I think the other two have done that too, and we're all gonna go through it in life, so I appreciate that Garcia just coming back. You know, pushing through it, so, um. But anyway, thank you. Um. So if you don't have anything else, so for me, uh, I've got a video shoot from really cool Eagle Communications. Um, I'm gonna do a kind of a twenty twenty-three wrap-up. We didn't get to do twenty twenty-two wrap-up, so we're gonna do twenty twenty-three wrap-up early. It'll be shot Wednesday in the rec center. And it'll be, this will be the first time we've ever done it. It'll be just hitting the highlights. I think you're gonna be shocked at what we've accomplished. I think when you start to pull all these things together, it's, it's amazing. You forget all the little things, you know? The, the, the cost here with the sidewalk, the, the multi-use path is underway. So I'll hit the positives. We'll talk a little bit about Chrisick Park. Once again, not gonna get into too much depth and detail. Just letting people know we're gonna start moving forward a lot more rapidly, um, starting tonight. And, um, it'll be just a positive upbeat. And if you'd like to join me, you're more than welcome to. It's, it's better to have a couple of people, you know? It's kinda like a sports broadcast. You want different personalities up there and stuff, so be more than welcome. I think we're gonna start at four o'clock on Wednesday. Um, when will it be edited? I mean, there should be nothing Melissa has to look at. I mean, it should be done, cut and done. There's just nothing controversial that. You know, I'm gonna at least try not to, so, um, should be. And if it's done for the election, great. If it's not, great. I mean, it'll be up and down. But in that process, you know, I give Dustin credit, myself credit, Cole we credit. You went to the last two football games, you're like, hey, we're doing this broadcast, you know, the. Bearcats have been very successful. The good thing about that is the, the view, the listenership grows as a more successful, people start to pay attention. So they said, hey, we get this listenership, if you will pay us blah, 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 you can sponsor some, uh, you know, advertising on the air. We did, and Cole said it really paid off. So, um, and not only that, but we, we did our part. We even mentioned the, the election. We talked Friday really late and they did a little advertisement on the election, just trying to do our part and, you know? Tell people when, when it is and you need more information how to get it, so. Just taking the management opportunity to communicate. With that said, um, my comments are, are, are finished. Um, but we do, do need to go into an executive session, um. It'd be attorney-client privilege, uh, for discussing, uh, issues related to Chrisick Park. So if someone wanted to make a motion, uh, we probably gonna need. Uh, I'm gonna say at least fifteen minutes, maybe? Maybe longer, but maybe twenty minutes? So it'll be starting at six twenty-eight and ending at six forty-eight? Does that sound good, everybody? Okay. If the, um. City clerk, the administrator, council, the mayor, city attorney.
For mayor, I'm making a motion to go into executive session, assess for the park. To include city clerk, city administrator, council and city attorney. And for ten minutes, fifteen minutes?
Twenty.
Twenty minutes, all right. Six forty-eight.
All right, Garcia, make a motion to go into executive session, attorney-client privilege. To include the mayor, the council, city clerk, uh, city attorney, city administrator until six forty-eight.